There are three wooden bird watching benches which have paint that are peeling off of them. And kind of coming off, so I would like to scrape all of that paint off and replace it with new paint. And there are also screws protruding out of the benches, which I would also like to re-fixate those. Back into the bench, making them a little bit safer to sit on. And on one of the benches, there's like a chip in one of the boards that's like chipped out and I would like to replace that board. And the next thing I would like to do is on the boardwalk, it has like mildew and moss growing on the edge. Because it's in like a shaded part, so I would like to clean off that because it's also causing a little bit discoloration. Of the boards on the edge. And I would like to trim like vegetation that is growing onto the boards. And like over and sometimes through the boards. And then I would also like to put in two birdhouses that look similar to the two that are there. And I would put them right in front of the bird watching hill and along one of the pathways. And then I also have some photos of the moss and the vegetation and the benches. And of what the boardwalks look like. And also on the boardwalk, there are the benches which had mildew growing on them and I would like to clean off that mildew.
So what would you, what would you use to clean this off with?
I'd mainly scrape it and then if it doesn't come off with scraping, clean it off with water. And if it doesn't come off with water, I would use like a cleaning solution that is safe for the environment.
Very good. And you have several scouts helping you on this?
Yes, I have at least six that would be going to help.
So you organized a project and give them each a job, right?
Yeah.
That's your job.
And what's your timeframe for getting it done?
Um, I would like to get it done around August, maybe early July. Oh wait, late July.
Any other questions from the board?
We always appreciate when the scouts want to do something for the, for the town.
It, um, I'm sure Mr. Gunner was involved a little bit with this?
Yeah, we met uh, with his parents and uh, he uh, found these issues on his own. And uh, really great ideas, especially the birdhouses. They told me about a lot of people down here.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's really nice if you're willing to do all that hard work to help us. Thank you.
Yeah, what, what kind of birds do you want to see in the birdhouses?
Um, they're called bluebird boxes, so definitely bluebirds. When I was down there, I saw a bluebird in that, one of them. I'm not sure exactly what birds go in them, but I know bluebirds.
So we're aiming for bluebirds?
Yes.
Good. What was your favorite badge to get?
Um, hmm. I liked insect study.
Alright, that kind of conflicts with your birdhouse, right? That's good. No, thank you so much for doing it. It really means a lot to everybody. We all use the park and uh, your work will is, is very much appreciated, so.
We certainly appreciate it and uh, also appreciate the fact that you're working to be an Eagle Scout. That's a really important. Um, thing to do in Scouts and uh, prestigious and uh, it'll go with you through life, so. Good luck with that. Our procedure would be, we'll put this on our next meeting after this. Um, and vote on it and I don't think you have any problems, so you're welcome to stay, but if you don't, if you have something else you have to do, you, you can leave.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Gregory. Uh, you can leave it on because some probably other. Alright, next on the agenda, the polling place agreement. This is just the lease agreement. Um, with the board of elections for using, um, next room over for polling and elections. It uh, agrees to pay the owner a hundred dollars for each election listed. And uh, basically a contract that uh, you guys have any questions? We just put it on uh, the agenda?
Fine.
Okay.
Jim, it's also for the senior center and the highway garage.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry. All three places. Alright, next, I don't know if this is something we have to vote on, but just something that it came up. Uh, last week, I think during a planning board meeting?
Yep.
Where we had an issue with uh, air conditioning and a heater came on at the same time. And we didn't have access to the roof because it was locked. And we're thinking about putting, putting what they call a Knox vault or a Knox box. Uh, and, and maybe you can talk a little bit about that because you, it was your ideal is?
Sure, um, so Knox box, it's a, that's the brand name, but it is an exterior vault that attaches. It's either on the face of the building or it's recessed, um, but it is either keyed or an electronic box. That allows um, the fire department access to a set of keys. That get them into the areas and spaces of a building that they need to get in, so utility rooms. Um, sprinkler rooms, uh, you know, gathering spaces, things like that, the roof. Um, and um, so I just have some brief information on it right now. Um, Fire Chief LeBlanc is gonna come in on Friday um, to meet with me, so we can just talk about. The spaces that he would like to have access to in the event of an emergency, so they don't have to wait for um. For someone to come with a key to let them in, um, and then they also, in the event of an actual emergency, don't cause building damage. Because if there's nobody here, they're breaking down the doors. Um, so um, I just wanted to talk to him about it, get his um, you know, under, get an understanding of what it is that he would like to see out there. And um, and then move forward with that. There is a cost, um. Um, they range from four hundred upwards of, you know, a thousand dollars, so. Um, but we'll bring that to you um, for a vote, I'm sure.
From my understanding, uh, the issue was just a wire.
Was that Martha?
A loose wire on one of the units upstairs, so it was sending a bad signal. So we were getting heat and air conditioning at the same time, still under warranty, they fixed it. Just so we have access to the building for emergencies purposes, so.
And it could be anybody too, right? I, because I just, or no, or is it just them? Or the police department?
Generally, we have several locations throughout the village and town that we have access to lock boxes. Um, at apartment buildings and such that generally we're the first one there anyways.
Well, I'm thinking like sometime, if there was a security alarm that, that goes off in error, or just, they're not even just the fire department. It would just be for?
Yeah, it would just be for emergency alarms going off, so we could check the building with the fire department. And then we would still have to wait for Martha or somebody to come.
Okay.
To reset the alarm, to determine if it was a false or?
Well, but even to get in initially.
So my understanding is that if I wanted to get into that box, I couldn't, correct?
That's correct. This is so, and, and I think the reason for that is so that the keys are maintained as they go in, when the box is originally put in, right? So we don't have any additional people.
Only the?
It is for emergency responders.
Forget your keys, you don't come and take those keys and then forget to put them back.
Right, exactly.
No, I know that, but I?
I just need a master key to the building. I didn't have one yet, you know, we just, all these things are just coming, you know.
Well, I can remember how many times Martha was called over to, to glee, you know, at different times. I guess this wouldn't avoid that, but I didn't know, yeah.
Chuck was out of town, I didn't have a key, Martha was out of town.
Right.
So, we're gonna fix all those problems, this is the start of it.
The fire department got to use the ladder truck though, so, there's the plus.
Getting our techs.
It was a good training.
Okay, you guys are good with all that, I mean, okay. Alright, next, uh, the Rock special use permit. Talking with uh, Councilwoman Priest today. We probably will refer the special use permit to the planning board, but we feel. That we need to get involved as a board, so Sue has volunteered. I know that either myself or Chuck would be the other person involved. I know Chuck's working with Luke on something else, I don't wanna, so if it's. Two of the three of us will be working on this and um, we're gonna sit down and we'll take any ideas from you guys, if you could email us. Look at the list, whatever things you think should be in there. We're gonna sit down, we're gonna do the same and then we're gonna meet with Rock, I think Friday we decided. Um, and show, they're gonna see what they want, we're gonna tell them what we need and uh, get this, so it gets the process moving a little bit. So in tonight's meeting, we will refer to the planning board also to do the same thing, but we're gonna, we're gonna do the same thing, same exercise.
You say, looking at the list is, we wanna. I think in, we wanna try to. Uh, come up with a list that doesn't make the Rock come here every meeting to try to ask for something else to do. I think their, their language is, is really kind of really, really restrictive and specific.
Right.
So the, we should probably aim to kind of expand it a little bit to allow them to continue to do the programs that they're doing without restricting too much. Um, and without allowing them to, you know, to, do things that are, that the property's not meant to be. So then, it is gonna be difficult to find that middle ground, but.
Understandably, and I think Sue brought that up to categorize what they're gonna do, because they're gonna pick up programs and I can have to come back. Our, our biggest thing is times and certain things and?
Right.
So.
So if you have any like um, restrictions on times or, you know. Or time noise or type of event, you know, you can only have X number of events over a certain number of people per year. Those, so, those are the kind of things we're looking for.
So if you guys, uh?
You're meeting Friday?
We're gonna meet Friday, if you get your ideas um, somewhat together, just email them to us. And then we'll meet and go for that.
And just the timing on this, so the planning board will meet in August. And then we'll have our first meeting, we'll probably set the public hearing, right, would be the goal. And then two weeks after that would be the public hearing. And?
We're still waiting too for the um, site plan.
Yeah.
It needed to be?
Need all the updates.
Updated. So as, as long as they get that back to us. I know they wanna get in the ground and shell up before winter time. Um, so, but we gotta go through the process.
Right, there's also a timing from when Martha, you were saying when you receive what they need to give you, it's thirty days to the county, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we have Willa Sher Road, O D A, Mr. Merle. How are you?
So, uh, we've met and. We came up with a proposal for you, so I believe Liz emailed it to you, correct?
I, I did receive a communication from Liz uh, that was different than any that was revised.
It was, it was what we came up with to get you through this project.
I, I wasn't part of that discussion. Uh, the, the discussion about lot three to leave it to its original size, I, I wasn't there. But I made the uh, plan as per Liz's email. Uh, so that survey is there.
You did not get it? I couldn't hear you.
I, I got the communication from Liz that said leave lot three the size that it is.
Right.
Provide a hundred and fifty foot rear yard setback. And combine the front two lots and I received that communication. I'm just stating, I was not part of the discussion that went into the making of that recommendation.
Okay, um, that was the deal that we, the best deal that we could come up to give to you to get this going.
Right.
As you said in my office, you wanted to get this done. And Chuck and I went over it and I think Martha was in on that um, meeting. And we looked at everything that would best suit that project. And it's pretty close to what you originally had. Except for I think we're asking for a drainage plan and we're asking, you agreed that you would give up the first lot, number one. Correct?
Um, I, I'm here to discuss, um, sorry, I. I was advised to ask for a vote on not combining lot one, would you like me to explain that? Is this a good time?
I, I.
Advised by who?
Uh, my advisor.
Like a straw poll, like?
No, 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 outside advisor. So if I may, I was asked for to request a vote on not combining the two lots. And then if needed, a vote to combine, so the two surveys that I proposed or that I submitted for the application. One shows uh, the lots not combined and one shows them combined. And the um, information I received was that it's unusual to request uh, lots to be combined. In fact, my attorney was not familiar with another situation. So, he just asked for a vote and um, I would ask the board to provide a vote on that. And if that sinks. Then.
I would, I would, I would be willing to vote on the proposal that we put together. I'm not too sure I'm willing to vote on, uh, take a vote on something that your attorney's asking us.
When, when you say we, I just wanted to add that I wasn't part of that conversation, so I'm not, the, the board put together. So I, I wanted to ask for a vote for, um. You know, not combining lots because my understanding is it's very unusual to request lot combination to a lot that's not continuous. I, you, you're the board, like, I just asked for a vote and I, um.
What's your opinion on this?
Like, I don't get what we're, what. You submitted, you submitted, you, so regardless of whether you were a part of that conversation, you submitted this plan, this one. And this was what we were going to vote on is to, a yea or a nay on this plan?
That was the request that I received on Tuesday.
But basically, is that what you are asking us to do right now or no?
I'm asking, requesting a vote for uh, not combining the lots. And because I, I heard it was very unusual to request an applicant um, to combine lots.
So are you not submitting this to be voted on this, this O D, this here?
It's also submitted.
So you're requesting that we take a vote, yea or nay, to accept this site plan?
Yeah.
And then yea or nay to accept this site plan?
Yeah.
You, when we sat in my office, you said you were willing to give up lot number one.
That was at a different size and not what I was advised. I mean, there was something different that came back on Tuesday. If.
You, you said you would give up lot one, number one, because it's not conforming, just so you could get. Lot number three, I believe is the one that you want to build.
It's a good outcome, I'm just saying, if I have a chance to hang on to the front lot and maybe pitch a tent there when I visit town, I'd like to keep it. It's for sentimental reasons. It might be nice for me to have.
And, and our proposal was that you combined them so that you couldn't come back and build on it again. And that we, and that it was put in the deed that it could not be done.
I, I recognize that it's not buildable and it's noted on the plan as not buildable, so.
That's what we're asking, that's what we're gonna vote on, that's what we proposed. Okay, we're not gonna take a vote on something that. Your lawyer or someone else put in front of us, we're not doing it, okay?
Right, uh, and maybe to make it a little more clear, it's that we're, we're looking at this whole parcel as one big picture in the town of Aurora.
Yeah.
So you asking us to take a vote on a piece of this picture. Um, changes how we think about all the other pieces in the picture and what we're gonna do there. So we've always looked at this within our O D A code and what we are trying to do with our O D A code, which is the create space. Make sure everybody's, you know, um, conforming and we've given, in this plan, we've given leeway to that third lot. As um, you know, a, a area variance.
Yep.
Um, because the front lot has been combined, so we're looking at that at one big picture. And um, I would agree with Jim that I wouldn't vote on things in separate pieces, it's one big proposal.
Yep, I agree.
I, I appreciate the feedback and uh, the um, whoever put together the lot three solution, uh, I appreciate the hard work that went into that. So I look forward to being on the agenda uh, in the full round, I should say the full session.
So I, you're looking forward to coming back to another meeting with?
No, no, the, the session that follows this one, I'm, I'm on the agenda for the full session, so I'm looking forward to it.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
No, thank you.
Hey, I don't, I mean, do we? I'm not understanding the situation. To think about all of it through, what application are we voting on today?
We're not.
We're not.
Well, I thought we're vote, I thought, are we not voting on what the proposal was? Where you combine lot, contingent upon lot?
Have that, any of that.
Well, if he's not in agreeance, I, I don't understand what he's looking forward to, if we're not in agreeance with it, then why would we?
No, he's asking us to vote on this proposal that we sent him, correct?
Am I coming up again? We have a couple more questions, so the way I see this is this is your application that we are receiving from you. That we are going to vote on today, now how we got to that application is through discussions and how you've done this, so. I view this, I was not a part of those discussions as well, this is your application to us and this is what you're requesting with this, what you see on the screen. With this site plan, correct?
No.
No, with the one you see on the screen. This paper here is not attached to any application and I don't.
Maybe you guys don't, let me read this, so this is, this is what was sent, um, I think from Liz, right? Okay, the town board would be willing to consider the filing for approval, combine lots one and two. Creating a legal lot of approximately three point one acres with the understanding and possible deed restriction. That this lot will never be allowed to be subdivided in the future. Number two, recorded deed creating new lot, number one required as condition for approval. Lot, number three, lot three will remain as is today is a one point eight seven acre in the flag lot area, less the flagpole. In an area variance of one point one three acres and a front yard setback variance of a hundred and twenty five feet to allow a house. To be built at seventy five feet from the front line. So it says you will need to submit a new application with a final date drawing showing the new lot one setbacks for building envelopes of lot two. And seventy five foot setbacks, fifty foot rear, uh, rear yard setback and seventy five ingress, egress setback. Forty foot opposite side setback. I believe there was also something, uh, Liz, about the drainage, was there or not?
No, the drainage on lot four, which is already built out, is something that I'll address separately.
Okay.
Okay, so I, so we are voting today on the application with this site drawing?
However, no, because those, all of those changes are not reflected in this drawing, correct?
Right.
I can't, it's so small, but I did not.
So we would need to table this, we would need to get a seeker. We need a resolution for a seeker, we need a resolution for a front yard setback and lot size. We would need a resolution for the O D A. This would all be contingent on filing a new deed. I had drainage plan in there, but I, Liz, you're gonna take care of that.
Right.
So that's what I thought you were coming to agree to tonight.
I don't, I was never, uh, I haven't seen that document.
Okay, I thought you sent this to Mr. Merle.
I don't believe I've seen it, I have not seen it.
Um, I sent a similar email, um, at Chuck's request. Uh, outlining the details of lot three in that it stays as drawn. With the seventy five foot front yard setback, a hundred and fifty foot rear yard setback. Seventy five foot side yard setback from ingress egress and a forty opposite side. Um, and I also noted on there that um, lots one and two to be combined into one parcel. That was my instruction to him.
Okay, and you received that?
Yeah, yeah, I included that in the packet back to you guys, acknowledging.
You did not receive that?
I, I received it and I also included it in my packet back to zoning.
So did you get that Liz? Did you get the application with all the changes or?
Yeah, we've got it.
Application that you have on the screen is the application that I received.
So, the very first one, I was kinda confused, why did we get another, what was the second one?
It, it was because I knew I was on the working session and, you know, I was hoping that I could not combine those lots. The feedback from this board during the working session is clear, so that was the feedback I was looking for, something affirmative.
So we can vote on this Liz, um, your agreeance with this? With the plan that we set them, we sent.
You make the decisions.
We don't have the resolution.
I know, but I, I wanna make sure you're agreeing to that application that we sat down and talked about.
If, if I may, a, a vote that's contingent on me submitting the materials that you are asking for is fine. A contingent on follow up with one, two, three, I was not aware of some of those other items, it's the first I'm hearing them, but contingent upon is acceptable.
It's changed so much, so.
We don't, we don't have the written resolutions though. For, for you to consider, like we always have for the O D A, for the seeker and everything.
Okay, so what we need to do, we'll have to table it.
We would just prepare those and have them ready for the next meeting.
We'll table that tonight, they'll prepare the resolutions for everything that I just read. And then we can vote on it the next week, if we're all in agreeance with it.
I, sounds great, I like working sessions.
Okay, just so we understand.
Any, any other questions for me?
I have none, thank you.
So we, everybody up here is in agreeance, but, you know, once we get that resolution, if it's in line with this, we're okay with it, right? Just so. We, I've responded in the beginning that I was, okay, um, I still though asked the question. You know, somewhere in the resolution stating the process, we're, we're, we're not approving a building application. Correct, so any. Once at such time, someone actually decides to build on that property, they have to. Get a building permit, which would require a review, the whole review process, yeah. Uh, you know, again, the.
The, the resolutions always include that, it's usually the second last paragraph.
Right, but I'm just wanting to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, because we go through all of this and jumping through hoops and, and. And approving something, but it's really. Kind of a conceptual approval, because.
Well, we're approving that you can build on a very, very.
Correct, but it's not.
With these restrictions.
Right, you still need a building permit and you still need to go through and, and I believe we'll have to. You know, show where the actual house is going to go on that parcel and that kind of thing, correct?
Uh, as Martha said, with that um, part of the resolution in there, the person who purchases the lot and then builds. Goes through this process all over again with the house actually plotted on the property, driveway location, drainage located, everything.
Right.
Just, just as a point of order, if, if it's an approved O D A with a, with a house on, in, within the site plan. Do, does the buyer have to come before this board or can they go to zoning and get a permit based on the O D A that's been, that will be approved soon? Is every new house of?
No, doesn't it just go through Liz?
Yeah.
Just a building.
Because it'll be an approved lot with these restrictions and then it has to fit the site plan.
No, I don't think so.
It's.
The way we have always handled O D A lots is you approve them. And then with the statement in the resolution that it, at the time of construction. That the applicant resubmit with the house location and all of the other requirements, driveway. That the applicant resubmit with the house location and all of the other requirements, driveway, turnaround, drainage. All of those things are also included on that site plan.
They may have to come in front of us, but not go through. The process of the ODA because they already have the okay, they just have to give.
Right, I understand that. I just want to make sure that, that the applicant understands that. Because it, that's all.
Yeah, it'll be approved, it'll be approved. It's just that it has to fall into the building code and resolutions that we set forth.
Right.
Okay.
Great. Next, we have, just to talk a little bit more about the cannabis legislation. And where we're at with it. I wanted to ask the board if they thought sending out a survey to the. Residents to see what their thoughts were, whether it be. Online survey or. Paper survey, whatever. Just to get some ideas. Right now, the, the committee that we set in on is leaning towards opting out. At first to see how it, it works in other communities, because you can always opt in at any time.
Which would prevent anyone from opening up a?
Opting out will prevent a, it's not to prevent the usage or.
Correct.
It's just preventing a dispensary or weed bar. Until we okay it, and we can okay one, we can okay both, we can one or the other, or we can say no to everything.
And until then, the town would then be opting out of any revenue.
Right, and we're not too sure what those revenues are going to be in the town of Aurora. And I, I wouldn't want to base decision on the revenues, but.
Well, it needs to be part of the.
We're in, we're in this until we opt out, okay? By opting out, we can always opt in, but if you are in, you cannot opt out.
Are most municipalities undertaking the, we're opting out right now?
Some are, and some are. Amherst, who has UV, they're opting in. There's a lot of, 150,000 people in Amherst. It'd be a lot of tax money for them. Plus they have the colleges and everything, so. But I have other ones that are, are thinking the same way as we are that are going to take a wait and see approach. And we could opt out in, in February, opt right in. Or if we want to see it, a couple of months go by and see what happens or a year or whatever. And, and see how it's working in other communities. So that, that's what the recommendation of the committee that we, that the town, waiting to hear what the village is going to do. But I thought. To even maybe get the residents involved, that we do some kind of a survey.
And in the meantime, opt out until we.
Well, we got till the end of the year. We could, we could do the survey now. We got to the end of the year to actually. Make that decision.
What was the basis for opting out other than wait and see? That the committee made?
Yeah, it, it's not going to prevent anybody from using it or growing it or anything. It's just. Do we want to see if it's going to work or, you know, is it going to be any problems or?
But I mean.
Do we want it? Does the community want it? That was one of the reasons for a survey, maybe the community wants.
And I think we can, we can get community feedback to make a decision by the end of the year. I would not want to make the decision to opt out right now. I think that this law has been passed on a state level, and it's up to us as a community to decide what is the best path forward for our community. I think revenue is a part of it. I think that if we don't, that if we do opt out, then we are missing out on revenue that is going to be going to other municipalities. I think that is something that we need to consider. But I also think we need, yes, absolutely, we need to consider the opinions of the residents in, in the town and in the village and come up with a community approach. But I, I hesitate to agree with the let's wait and see approach, because I think we need to make that decision on our own as a community. There's really not much that we're going to see. You know, even if we say Amherst has opted in and they're having all sorts of problems near the university, it's a different situation than it is in our town. And, you know, I, I don't know what. What that let's wait and see approach gives us, I'd rather, as a community, come together, gather thoughts, and then have the board decide at the end of the year and, and.
And then everyone, that's what we want. We want everyone's opinion. I think the reason the committee. Thought, well, if you opt in, you're in, and if a problem arises, you're still in. By opting out, you can, you can take that wait and see, and if. There are problems, maybe we don't want to be involved with them. I wouldn't be fooled by the, the revenue that you think you're going to be getting. It's not, it's not going to be as much as you think.
Well, it's not only a revenue issue. I think it's a community issue and that the, the decision should be made based on what we feel is, we as residents feel is right in the community. And I, I know that there's surprising positions from, from anyone you speak to, and it's not the position you would think. So I think that in addition to the revenue, it is, do we, you know, what do we want to see in our town, right? On the state level, this is now permitted. And what type of town and village, the village has it, what type of town and village do we want to have? I wouldn't want to make a decision to opt out, spend all the time just to maybe opt in a little bit later. I think if it's an opt out, it's an opt out. And then we set that, and it's difficult to make those changes as well. But I, I mean, opting in is, is also an option that may be good for the community, maybe not, but maybe something that the community wants as well. So. At this point, I think what we would want to do is set up some, an informational session, maybe, get some public hearings. I think we can set several of them, come up with a plan by the end of the year of what community input we want to get. And then, and then make the decision more towards the end of the year.
The idea was a survey because you could reach. Maybe more people. Not everyone's going to come to the public hearing, I wouldn't think, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but. A townwide survey that we could try to get everyone's input on it.
This would probably be a good time to get red alert moving as well, because that might help people get signed up for something like that.
What was that?
To get some, sort of like a red alert program signed up for, for as well if the efforts, if you want to get in touch with everyone truly. We do want to, you know, have email contacts and cell phones and all things like that.
Yeah.
And we had spoken.
I'm not sure how, how to do it right now. That's why I'm looking for ideas. I'm just throwing that out. Some communities are doing that.
The survey is going to only be as good as, first of all, the number of people that return it. Which is usually pretty low. And secondly, as good as the information that we're able to give them. So if I, as a resident, I'm going to be looking at the survey and you're going to say, do we want to? Do we want to opt in? Do we want to opt out? And I'm going to say, well, what is our revenue stream going to bring and how many dispensaries are you going to have? And what, what does the town want to do? So I think we're a little early for the survey without having more of those answers that makes, forms a whole opinion. From residents that have the information to then make that decision.
It's really hard, it's really hard to know what the revenue stream is going to be. There's a percentage.
Yeah.
You just don't know what the volume is going to be, so.
Right, but we, you know, we have to discuss like how many would, we could say how many dispensaries we want to allow, what, you know, I mean.
Where would they be?
Where would they be in our zone?
That's why we had zoning and planning board at, a member of each at the meeting. Just, you know, and I even said, even if we don't, if we opt out, you guys should be. Looking and giving us recommendations of if we did opt in, where they would go.
Is it, is it possible?
Opinions too.
Yeah. Yeah. Is it possible to come up with, you know, we could come up with proposals? A one, A and B and a C, or an A and a B that we could put with the survey as well?
Well, you have, you have three choices.
Three choices. What do you prefer on this survey?
You have three choices, no, or one of them, or both of them. You can have a dispensary and a bar, or you can have just a dispensary or just a bar.
Right.
That's your three choice.
Well, like Sue said, the question's going to be, where would they be?
And how many are we going to allow? Because we can allow a restriction on the number.
That's going to be, I don't know if that's up to us. I believe that's up to the state licensing. It's almost going to be like a SLA type thing. How many licenses they're going to allow in each community. I don't, I'm not too sure that is under our control.
Yeah, we can't say how many, we can say where.
Right. We could put it in the I zone or something, right, if we wanted to or?
But I also feel like putting a survey now and not telling them where they would be or, you know, what the revenue would be.
Well, no, we don't, and again, this is just, this is just, this is just for discussion right now because. I'm looking for ideas on how we approach the residents. We can do an informational meeting. See how many people come, you know, but we do need a little bit more information. I agree with you there. But just so everyone's aware, we got to the end of the year, and those are our decisions, and any, any ideas or any input, welcome.
Is it possible to get calculations based on Colorado or states? Looking at similar communities and what the. Purchases have been. I mean, this is not completely new, right? There are some places in the United States that we can base our facts and figures on. Have what, what are the issues that we've seen in Colorado and, you know, a similar suburb to Denver?
Shane, you have any input?
Yeah, I can tell you from California and Colorado, everything I've read is fatal accidents go up when marijuana is legalized. And quality of life crimes. Go up incredibly high, disorderly conducts, heavy crimes. I know, just, just from the issues we've dealt with. In the village with the vape shop, the kids hanging out, the littering, the complaints from people of. Young people blocking doors to other businesses. Were there for the vape shop. It's been an issue for all the business owners up on Main Street that are around that. I, I don't see where waiting would be a bad thing, because if you jump in and it's a bad scene, there's no getting out at that point.
Well, let's, let's. Make a difference here. What the, the point you make about the vape shop and the, the. The people who are hanging out around the vape shop is one issue. But the increase in the petty crime and things like that, I mean, you're going to have people driving to Orchard Park or Amherst or wherever if they want to. So is there a study that says that while you have it in your town, there is an increase by a certain percentage of use of marijuana for recreational purposes? Right? I don't know. My idea, my, just using logic, you would think that. You could drive to Orchard Park, and if you're going to do it, you're going to do it, right? That the, that having a dispensary in the town of Aurora would not. Increase or decrease the use of recreation, the recreational use of marijuana.
But it would directly impact issues we've had with, say, the vape shop. If those same realities take place at a marijuana dispensary. If we don't have them, we don't have those issues, and the businesses around them won't have those issues.
Then you may have driving issues.
Well, we have, we have KWI issues too, so. You know, it's.
I think we really need to, in the town, we have to take a hard look at where we would want them or where would we put them, where would they go? Because nobody can answer the question in the town. The village is a little different. It's condensed and it's your business district. I think we would need to tell the. Public where, where should we go? And it's such a limited space in the town.
I, and this is all good discussion, because I, I need, you know, we need to. To discuss it. And I still, like I said, I'm still waiting to see what the village. Is going to do.
Tony, do you know where they're at, the village?
There hasn't been a detailed discussion yet from both perspectives. I did reach out to Chamber Commerce, because I think it's important to get input from businesses. We saw the, and the. And the plastic straws and things that, that the. Businesses didn't feel like we got them engaged early enough, so I think that would be a critical part. And to Shane's point, there are some people near the theater and whatnot that have complained about trash. But I'm not sure that that's going to automatically escalate. I'm sure there's going to be people. There was an article in the paper today talking about people saying, I want to get ahead of schedule. I want to open up a, an accessories kind of. Building so that I'm ready to go when it's finally approved in 2023 or whenever it's available. So from that point of view, I, I think there's going to be kind of a learning curve as you go along, but in terms of. Some limitations on the town, one thing I did notice was the state is driving it towards similar rules as alcohol. So from that point of view, it would be fairly easy to assume that you wouldn't want to be within like a thousand feet of a school or something along that line. That that's going to be part of their base. Set of rules according to what we've seen so far. It's a lot that hasn't been defined, though.
I mean, the park issue that we're going to be discussing next, is that affected by whether or not there is a, not a dispensary, but a, what is the other option?
No, we, no, it's just again, a discussion.
Any kind of smoking.
A bar.
Right, like a bar, I don't know what it's called, but is, is the presence of a bar, does that reduce the amount of? Smoking in parks? Does it reduce the amount of, you know, does it somehow, what impact does that have? I, I don't know.
I think another point is, you know, you've got to remember there's consumables too, right? Gummies and stuff like that, so. That would reduce the effect of secondhand smoke on people in park or other places. But it's not anything you can directly control other than to say. You know, if I've got a bar, maybe I add a third panel on the menu that says, here's, you know, cannabis stuff, and here's chicken wings, and here's alcohol.
At least the first two probably. But chicken wings probably, right? I, I think that the, the, that this is an issue that we really do need to take approaching it by saying that this is happening in our area. This is not our decision to say whether we want to have people smoking marijuana around the town, because. Unless we are able to see that there is a, there is a difference between whether a talent opts in or opts out. Is to the use and the problems that come from having marijuana, then for me, that is outside of our decision. Then our decision is, we as a community, what do we, how do we want to steer? This new thing that's happening in our town. Do we want to be able to put everyone and have one location that's walkable? Within the larger population center where you can go to get it. Do we not want to have a place they can drive that's farther away? Do we want, you know, what, how do we want to steer how this is going? And it could be very well that we want to say, no, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to do this. But for me, I think there's a long road that we have to take with business owners and Shane and everybody. That, that has to get to that point, and for me, I haven't, I don't, I don't know, I'm not at that point.
We're not, we're not making a decision.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I know.
This is just a discussion.
Yeah.
The other thing that you do have that you can perhaps leverage off of is the existing zoning code does have sections about. Banning adult uses into industrial areas and things like that. So there is some language that you could reexamine that's in the code today. That may give you some insights on, you know, what you want to do or not do. But, you know, again, from, from a pure town perspective, I think, for instance, there's probably going to be people down in West Falls who would be interested in having something local rather than having to come. Whether it's Orchard Park, West Seneca, or the village of East Aurora. But that doesn't mean there are majority. That just means.
So. I feel like we have to keep gathering it some more for me.
The survey's too soon, is what you're saying.
I think it's too soon. I'd like to hear what the villages ends up saying and what the reasoning is for it. And then, you know, I'll do a little research.
I thought it was important to bring it up.
No, it's, I think it's, we have, we have to have these conversations. It is, it is a big thing. And even though I said we don't want to let others decide, I do want to also hear the villages.
We're going to open a dispensary in Knox Farm and put it inside. Or Dock Park.
Okay, Tony, thanks. All right, so let's, I think that the discussion needs to be continued. Research needs to be done. Wait, see what the village does and go forward. Which brings us to the next. Item anyways.
Is the association of towns doing anything? Sorry, is this association of towns, have they put out any materials about this or done any studies? Sorry, is this, Association of Towns, have they put out any materials about this or done any studies?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No.
Be interesting to see what they say.
They're working on it, but they haven't put anything out yet. A lot of towns, and I have about eight or 10 of them here, a lot of them, as far as the smoking part of it, are starting to restrict it in certain areas of parks, certain times of day, near playgrounds and things like that, in answer to the marijuana smoking. Because if you can smoke a cigarette, you can smoke marijuana. So a lot of the towns are saying, okay, at this park, you cannot smoke between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, things like that. You cannot smoke at this beach. You can't smoke within 500 feet of this playground. There's a whole bunch of them that I printed out.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Jim, have you discussed it at your, I don't know if you've been to an Association of Towns meeting? Just to hear, just have you, have you had a meeting recently and discussed it? Or has it been on the agenda?
On, on an individual basis, but a lot of towns are prohibiting smoking in their parks. A lot of them didn't have those laws, as such as we didn't. Quite frankly, I thought we did, because every time I went to a park, I've never saw anybody smoke yet. But I'm not sure what, like New York, like Knox Park, I'm, I'm in there a lot, and I don't see too much smoking going on there either. But I'm not sure what the state does. But a lot of towns, because of the marijuana, are saying they're going to the no smoking rule. Very hard to enforce, Shane would probably admit to. But it's still, you know, I don't know, something we can act to. In case there's, there's flagrant use of it or whatever.
Well, you couldn't really restrict use of, right? With the gummy bear point that Tony made up, is there a way, yeah, like you, that would be?
The village was discussing just, you know, preliminary discussions. But I guess they can say, they can enact a law saying there's no smoking on village property, which would be a sidewalk. So basically, it would relate to just private residences.
With the town.
That's, I have to say, that's what they're doing.
Yeah. And with the town, that would just cover parks, right? And obviously, you know, the highway, I don't think there's much concern about highway grad.
If you, if you look through the, the different laws and resolutions that other towns have done, some have done just in their parks, some have done on any town property. It's up to.
And some, some have done more pinpointed, not at the playground, but.
Correct.
Is there an advantage there, Shane, like for enforcement? If we say, we're really concerned about our playgrounds, like get everybody off the playgrounds? That's easier to enforce, I would imagine, than the whole park.
Well, it depends on the size of the park.
Right.
I mean, the, the football families at the south end of Hamlin Park might not want it being smoked down there either, as well as the parents at the hot.
Yeah, Hamlin's a different.
Tennis courts in between or what have you.
Yeah. No, no, Hamlin's a different, a whole different thing there. Just thinking like a major's park, how would you even?
Well, I'm sure like it's smoked there right now, we just don't know because it's in the middle of the.
East Aurora kids, East Aurora kid? No.
For the U.S.
I think it'd be complicated to isolate certain areas in the park. I would say either you do it or you don't.
Just wondering what the, some, some towns have done the restrictions, what the.
You know, for instance, the, the agreement that we have with the arsenals specifically says no alcoholic beverages or smoking allowed by participants or spectators while soccer is going on. So you can get as detailed as that if you want to.
Yeah. Do, I mean, with Knox, do we even, are we allowed to make a decision there? It's not our park.
On, on our side, we can, yes.
Soccer fields, we lease that in the state.
But the state laws don't apply to the state park because we lease it?
I'm assuming we could be more restrictive. I'm not sure that we could undo.
Correct, we can be more restrictive. The state approved the, the agreement, so they were fine with that.
Yeah. So do we have an agreement with the, with the state?
We have an agreement with the state and with the arsenals.
I'm just thinking, the agreement with the state, does that have anything about?
I'd have to look through the whole thing, I don't know. I just know the arsenals can't. Yeah.
I'm with you, I always thought that our parks were no smoking, so I, I don't have any problem with. All our parks bring no smoking.
Even the pool at this point is still, it's not restricted.
Right.
So you'd have to get.
We're not looking at huge pieces of property like Knox Farm State Park. We're looking at, you know, or in.
Again, it's hard to enforce, but at least we're making a stand that there's no smoking.
Well, you give the, you give the tool to Shane, that if someone's smoking at the pool, you can go in there and do something, right? Now, you couldn't, you'd go in there and.
Right, we identify a problem, then we can let him know.
A, a lot of laws like that are enforced by complaint. If we see it, we'll act, but if, if nobody complains to us and we don't know how they can turn it in. Something like that would be enforced upon somebody complaining.
I mean, is it?
We have to do around the local law.
Yes.
Where are you guys on? I mean, I'm good with no smoking in our park.
I, I could tell you where I'm at with the whole thing. I totally agree. I would be very comfortable in saying no smoking in any of the parks. Because like you, you know, I guess, thinking of that smoking is technically allowed at the, the pool, that was a gross oversight, I guess. I just was not aware of that. So I would agree with that. I guess I don't, my position on the bars and the dispensaries is that I would not be interested regardless of what happens anywhere else in that, in my community. I have a strong feeling against the whole, the entire movement and, and even the, the state's position. So that would be my position with regard to amending the zoning to allow for either dispensaries and/or weed bars or lounges or whatever they would be called.
Luca, what's your position on the smoking?
It doesn't make sense to have that in parks, for sure.
Yeah.
The only thing I would think of is if there is an advantage to having this designated district where you can smoke, but that would be a, Shane, is that a bad idea?
Everybody's got their back here.
Yep.
You know, I, I don't think people with their kids, you know, especially with how bad they tell you cigarette smoking is, they don't want to tell their kids, well, no, but that's okay. I, I don't think you want it anywhere where people are pickpicking or playing with their kids or, you know, enjoying a nice summer day.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that. In fact, at Hamlin, someone, even you can tell when someone's smoking on their own property next to the playground.
Right.
And it's, it is pretty, pretty bad for the children that happens.
So if we need, if we were going to do it, we would have to have Ron draw up our local law.
Let's do it.
And I'm not too sure we have to vote on asking them to do that, or we can just have them do that.
No.
You just tell me.
Yeah. I want you to just draw up the law and.
And then we need a public hearing.
Then we'll have to have a public hearing.
Can we get that by next Friday to have like a week to review it?
No.
Is that possible?
No. Since we haven't had one, there's no rush.
Or, or at least like we get a week to review it before the meeting, if that's.
Yeah. So he's going to draw up a law, he'll send it to us. Next, next meeting, we can put on the agenda to set the public hearing.
Right. Okay, but I do agree with Luke, if we could look at it, have a little bit more time to look at it even beforehand, just so that.
There's no hurry.
Before it's on the agenda, even, yeah.
Now that this whole pool thing is out, I think we are in a hurry, right?
Yeah.
Well, they do have, they do have, I think there's a sign, no smoking, but we don't have it in the books anyplace. I researched all the town minutes.
Yeah.
There's no local law, I couldn't find a resolution.
Well, I mean, that's good, it means it hasn't been a problem, right? So.
Right.
But there is a sign that says it.
There probably is a sign that says it, but yeah. Right, but there's nothing adopted in our code that covers it.
David, have you gotten any complaints? Because I haven't.
I, when's the last time you ordered a ticket for somebody smoking in the park?
And if it is, it's definitely.
What's the percentage of people smoking, or maybe 10%?
Yeah, I mean, we usually, if we have an issue with teenagers.
Right, it's more of an issue, like in majors, like you said, they go down there in the park. We believe they have a sign, it's right there.
All right.
Hey.
So Ron's gonna, he's gonna draw that up and anything else from the board before we move on to the next meeting?
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to the town board meeting. And we have a public hearing tonight on the local law for the ODA moratorium. And I will start this more, this public hearing at 7:03, 7:03. And I would ask if anyone in the audience would want to come up and talk to the board, to come up to this table and use the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, just a quick point of order question. Would this moratorium impact current work or agenda items that are of my interest?
Nothing in process.
Okay, thank you.
Please, whatever you want, whatever is more comfortable.
Please talk into the mic, no, thank you.
My name is Robert Aronica, 1848 Boys Road. In my case, for the flag lots, it's a pretty effective thing because when we moved there 11 and a half years ago, the property didn't have flag lots. There was large farmland, and fortunately, one individual, Mr. Angasser, Ryan Angasser, he bought a 50-foot strip and uses it for access. So I guess sometimes flag lots for farming, and we support farming, are necessary in order to get to your backfields. But I think what's been happening is that this has been cut and paste. And our town is going into cut and paste to accommodate God knows what. On my other side, I'm going to have another flag lot. So I'm at God's mercy. It's 20 feet wide for about 550, 600 feet back, 20 feet. What this means is any approach or doing it, you're affecting encroachment on our property line. And the other side, which is the Sliz property. So any building using heavy vehicles or whatever are there. I think a quick fix on that, from what is existing, should be that a flag lot should have maybe 40 or 50 feet width, with 10 or 15 feet on either side before you put a, an access road. And that access road, let's call it a driveway, shouldn't exceed 20 feet to prevent some places where there are harboring residential neighborhoods doesn't become a subdivision, because you have a 40-feet-wide situation that people in there. Another situation that I think is a problem with flag lots, especially the narrower ones, is drainage. And what are the property widths of the flag lot? I think there should be, I know, Liz, we've talked about having property that you can cut in and you don't need a permit. Maybe you need, the owner should have markers when they're going to do anything on the flag lot other than the property lines. Maybe it's incumbent to have markers or property line delineation every 15 feet so that the adjacent property owners know if there's encroachment on a flag lot. God, I don't want any building behind my property, I'm an SOB. We have reached out, but that's another issue. I have a big mouth sometimes. And lastly, not just for flag lots, because they're going to need variances, but maybe even building, that we put, a million years ago, when I was a young lad of maybe 60 years of age, I'm going on 72, 72. And we were in Canada, and I noticed that there were signs for residential building. They had notices up. Maybe when we put buildings up or approaching variances for these flag lots or whatever, we had signs that notified the adjacent neighborhood that something's going on, that they could read the details. By chance, last week when I reached out, I found out about this hearing. I had no idea about it. So those are just some of the considerations. I hope that we deal with the smaller width flag lots, maybe put them somewhere in the garbage can and deal with it appropriately to be sensitive to the entrances to the other property, the adjacent impact that it has on those property owners. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just give a general statement. We completely agree with a, a lot of what you had said with regard to your concerns, and some of them have been already addressed in the code. But this whole process is to look at all of those things, all of these things further. You know, there is notification of, of neighboring properties when there's a variance and different things like that, but that is all going to be looked at. Thank you.
Hi, Joe McCann, 11 Glen Ridge Road. I rise in support of exactly what this gentleman said. I think it's incumbent upon the board to take consideration of current property owners when, in looking at ODAs since I've been attending town board meetings. It's, it's a bigger part of the agenda than I would have expected. And I understand, I, I think it's an opportunity for people to sort of maximize their property value when they're moving away or what have you. But I think we need to look hard at the, at other property owners who, who have moved into that rural area and don't want houses on top of them. So I, I rise today to fully support the moratorium and a hard look at the ODA policy of the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Anybody else? Nobody? Anybody online?
Are we public hearing allowing online?
Well, I didn't know if we had to, okay.
Like, we could open it up if you want to.
Then I will close this public hearing at 7:11. And talk to the board. Do we have, do we want to refer this? Do we want to vote on this tonight? Do we want to talk about it? What's your feelings?
On the moratorium?
Yes.
I'm fine voting on it.
Me too.
Okay.
Luke? Yes.
Okay, then. Let's see. We'll have to add there, right?
No, it's on, it's on B.
Yeah. By B.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was looking at new business. Okay. Next, we have the approval of the June 28, 2021 work session and meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jolene, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sue, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Next, we have audience, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any items that are on the agenda. If you wish to do so, please come up to the microphone and just give us your name and address.
And if there's anybody online to use the raise hand function or write in chat?
No one in the audience? No one in the audience?
Nobody online?
No online, okay. Then we go to unfinished business. A is the Warren Drive temporary use permit for soccer shots. And we had this at our last meeting. We tabled it because we weren't sure if it was gonna interfere with the lacrosse schedule. And from what I understand, it's not, so we can vote on that. Does everyone need to refresh themselves? They know about it? Not, I need a motion to approve the application of a temporary use permit for soccer shots. And this is on Wednesday, nine fifteen. And also eleven five?
Through.
Through eleven five, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Luke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. And we have the ODA moratorium. And this is Jolene, I think, we talked about a three-month
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Hello, do I have a motion to try? Yeah. To approve the local law for the moratorium on flag lots and ODAs?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. This is a roll call. I'll ask the town clerk.
Councilwoman Chansky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jeffy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Freeze?
Aye.
Supervisor Bob?
Aye. And that is approved. Okay, next we have new business. And we have the proposed maintenance repair at Majors Park for the Boy Scout Eagle project by Gregory. We just discussed this at the work session. Do I have a motion to approve this project?
Continue to fund insurance.
Continuing insurance? Do they know that?
I don't, I don't know if they do or not.
Okay. One thing we forgot to ask you is an insurance certificate from your troop. That would be something that that you could ask your leader for an insurance certificate, naming the town of Aurora.
Actually, they would ask Boy Scout Council.
Is that?
They would ask Boy Scout Council.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Your troop leader will know what the process is to go.
Well, I talked to him about it and he, he approved it. And then I have to pass it on to the the board for the council. And then this would be my signature for the beneficiary of my project. So.
So once you got your approvals from, from the scouts, you would just ask them to give us a certificate of insurance, naming the town as an additional insured.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, you call me or Martha, we can guide you through that.
Okay.
But they'll be familiar with that.
Okay.
Thank you. So the motion would be to approve this contingent upon receiving the insurance certificate. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Sue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jolene. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Beyond their new business is the polling place agreement that we discussed in the work session. And it's just a agreement between the town of Aurora and the Erie County Board of Elections. And it's giving the tenant us, agree, or we're the landlord, the tenant will pay us one hundred dollars for each election listed for the, any building for, that we use for voting. Do I have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign this agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jolene. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Next, we have the special use permit application for the Rock Rural Outreach Center. We've discussed in the work session that the town board will form a committee to also look at this. But we're also gonna refer to the planning board. So do I have a motion to refer the special use permit to the planning board?
So moved.
Motion by Sue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Andy, Willashire Road, ODA. Decided we're gonna table this.
No, I think we're, aren't we asking?
I'm in agreement with.
We don't have the resolution, right?
I mean, the resolution.
We don't have to ask Ron, we're just gonna ask him to do that.
Right.
We don't have to vote on it.
Right. No.
Okay.
So.
Could I provide some feedback during this?
I'm sorry?
Could I provide some feedback at this point? Can I provide some feedback at this moment? The, tonight's the first time I'm learning about the deed restriction. It's really not something I'm familiar with. I would like to review it with somebody because I, I don't really know a lot about that, and I'm interested to know what you're asking of that restriction. So if it's possible to do this without a deed restriction and the typical zoning tools that you have, I would probably save five thousand dollars of attorney fees to put a deed restriction together or some, some significant amount of money. So my ask is just to use, if possible, practical existing zoning tools and to table so I can review.
What's, what's involved around with the deed restriction?
There's no deed restriction.
There's no deed restriction.
He wants to talk to us.
Well, we're talking about. Okay.
It's a combination.
It's all right. We're talking about making sure that
Correct.
that piece of property.
Goes together.
This is a covenant?
And so. Basically saying, this is the way we would approve the application to the ODA.
So it would be the combination of the lots. But that would, that was where, that's where the deed would change. Right?
What do we require for that combination?
Not a deed restriction. I, I might have used the wrong terminology. It's, you're combining the lots, so it's gonna change the deed.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that important clarification.
But isn't it, maybe I'm confused now, because I think it is a deed restriction because we're asking that it never be split again, correct?
This is a, this is a covenant put on the land, correct?
They combine the lots, they can't.
So we're gonna, we're, he's gonna combine the two lots, then we're gonna have the other, the other two. And that first lot cannot be resplit. I think that's a deed restriction.
Could be. Would be considered that.
Is there another way to do it, which is what he's asking? I don't know that legally.
Yeah, your typical zoning, like, this is, we don't ask other three-acre lots to do a covenant or a restriction. So I would be bound by whatever all the other lots in town are bound by.
Well, sure we do. I mean, covenants are a common tool that are used by towns to approve zoning decisions. That's common. We did it a couple months ago with the, with the rock.
He could put a, Ron said he could put a covenant on there.
That it can't be split?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this is the first time I've learned of this request, and I'd just like to see the details and review them accordingly. I don't think you want to see me up here more times than practical.
Thank you. So we're asking Ron to do the resolution for the seeker, front yard setback, glass size, ODA.
Liz, can you be the point of contact? You understand what's happening, right? Can, you can give Liz. She understands what's happening, if that works for you. Are you okay with that?
To do that, right?
You table it until you get the resolution.
Right. So we're gonna table it until the resolution.
Correct.
And then you can look at it.
Right.
Is any questions?
But we also want Mr. Martin to understand what's happening with that resolution, and he can talk to Liz.
Once you're done, make sure we get it. Make sure Liz gets it. Liz will give it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you know what's going on.
Yeah, if there's a, a process, just keep me in the loop. I need a motion to table?
We are gonna table it. You can't make the motion.
All right. I have a motion to table the Willashire Road ODA as the attorney will be creating the resolutions and covenants as listed.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Sue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jolene. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. He is a senior center donation. This is a hundred dollars from the Lions Club of East Aurora. We'd like the donation to be placed in the line TA one thousand dot nine hundred. And they want to use that for a new picnic table. Do I have a motion to accept this donation for the senior center?
So moved.
Motion by Luke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. I'm gonna, yeah, okay. I'd like to, before we go to the next item, something that I was actually gonna do at the beginning of the meeting, and I, I apologize, I forgot. I wanted to recognize Tim Bailey, a longtime member of our planning board, over twenty years, passed away a few weeks ago. And we're actually gonna be appointing a replacement for him tonight, but Tim was not only a good friend, he was a Quanian and a great asset for the town, was very involved. And I was wondering if we could just have a moment of silence in his name. Thank you. Okay, going on. Alice Brown has been record, considered or recognized as the current alternate in, to the planning board and wants been recognized to be the replacement for Tim. And that would be through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Don Owens made the recommendation, and Alice has been on, on the planning board for quite a few years. So do I have a motion to appoint Alice Brown to fill the vacant spot of Tim Bailey's for the term of twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Luke, second by Sue. Any discussion?
Do we need a, an alternate? I know we had one meeting where we, we're not able to have the meeting because of a, a lack of quorum. Is that something we want to
We do.
reach out? We, we have.
We, no, we do need.
We do need an alternate, yeah, okay.
We definitely.
Perpetual need.
Yeah, yeah.
We definitely need that alternate on the planning board because two of our members go away during the winter.
So we need two?
No, we just need that, just that second alternate position filled.
And I think from what I've heard from them, we should actually start looking for their replacements also because they're spending more and more time away, and they feel it's probably important that we start looking for some.
So.
So who would like to vote here? Raise your hand, buddy?
Don't, don't raise your hand if you wanna be.
We just give you two votes. How does that sound? Those have an appointment to the open space committee to fill, one at least.
Those are still open, too?
We have, I think Martha, we had to get the, we have to get some responses back to you of people that are stepping down officially, correct?
We have, we have to get a resignation letter from Nancy.
From Nancy?
And the other two just didn't sign their oath card, so they're automatically disqualified.
Okay, so we, we have two, potentially three openings then on that committee. And I know of two that are interested in joining. So is it just a matter of getting a letter to the board?
Yes. If you have someone, you have someone, you said?
Yeah, when we were at the last meeting, there were two that were there that have been coming to meetings that wanted to join. I sent a message about one of them, the other one.
I don't know if people realize how important these volunteer boards are to the town, planning, zoning.
Maybe Adam could, could put a little headline there or something, again, looking for volunteers, as always, planning board members. Yeah. Yeah. Right.
And we certainly appreciate the, the work that they do and just what makes the town, town a special place, so. All right, next we have recreation, and this is a request to hire summer staff. These are lifeguards. They've completed, they've completed their training. They utilize them at this community pool. And we have four, Alexander Herr, Edward Randall, Grady Reagan, and Natalie Cassir. They're all being asked to work at twelve dollars and eighty cents per hour. Grady Reagan is the only non-resident.
Natalie also, two of them.
Oh, Natalie also.
Alice. That's Alice, right?
Alice, thank you for taking me.
Say, I just wanted to say thank you. I didn't see you over there in the corner.
Oh, I didn't even see her. Oh, my God. What were they hiding?
She, she's way back in the corner there. I didn't see her.
I'm sorry, I would have recognized her.
Better stop appointing people.
Sorry to interrupt, but they were.
No, no, I, I wish I would have known she was here. Okay, so the two residents, or two applicants for this job are Grady Reagan and Natalie Cassir that are not residents, just so you know. So I have a motion to approve the hiring as listed.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jolene. Do I have a second? Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have communications and reports. We have the June two thousand twenty-one town clerk tax, water clerk, dog control, and municipal shelter inspection, town clerk, building department, the proposed cemetery merger, and supervisors report. And the proposed cemetery merger is what's the name of it?
Griffins Mills and Oakwood Cemetery.
Griffins Mills, Oakwood, and the one that's gonna take them over.
Forest Lawn, yeah. That was actually approved, right?
I don't know.
The way I read that letter, that Griffins Mills was approved?
They're just giving us a notification that they're.
Yeah, no, that's great news.
It's great news for us.
Yes, how, I did, had no idea that was taking place.
If, if, if they did not take the cemeteries over, they revert to the town.
Does that include maintenance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Everything.
Everything.
Yeah. Right. Right, absolutely. No, that was great. I know.
Okay, business from the board members. I'll start with Luke.
Yeah, just continuing to work on the zoning amendments. That's come along pretty well. And we'll continue on that. The other thing, I guess, Jolene is probably better positioned to speak about the West Falls Committee. Just the sign, Dave and I went out looking for the location. We would, I, I think, propose at this point, right, to have the sign on the town right away so as not to involve the state and to move forward without that long application process that would really put it behind. Dave, you wanna say something?
Yeah, just where it would go, if you take right out there, currently there's a little dirt and cut through right at the corner, we would have to eliminate that, see that it's kind of people, it's just the thing to easier to go in that area, but we totally would it right away. We did look from way back and definitely very dis. We did look way back and definitely very dismal. Talked to the local resident that lives there, maybe willing to let us cut the tree down. I guess it's probably the best location, if you think about it, because in the town, you know, we tainted it. I talked to Ron, he said that that would be fine with us on that end. It's ready to come into the hamlet, so. Guess it's up to you guys, if you want me to go ahead with what we talked about in funding, if we have a verification one or not, I don't know if you wanna vote on that, or you probably don't have to.
I think we probably should, and just the location of it and whatever.
Shouldn't we have a diagram or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can get you some kind of drawing. Julie, or if anybody has time, wants to go up there with me. Better to do that at halftime, but I understand how it's tough.
We're still gonna need something for, you know.
Okay, I'll get that for it.
Rico could put together, Rico could put together some, if you need anything else from the design, the materials and things. We do, yeah, I don't know if we need any additional information.
Are you concerned with this sign? It's pretty unique, I think you saw in the pictures, it's made out of boulders, railroad tracks, trees. It's one of a kind.
Definitely unique.
Yes, I don't know if that's something. At the meeting, and honestly, it was very well intended, there was probably thirty people there, everybody seen. West Falls very positive about it, so I guess.
Just give us, give us the information, plans, where it's gonna be, I need that on, you know, on paper, so.
Try to get that for the next quarter. And then he's willing to build this, it's actually significantly much more money for that.
Yeah.
It's a nice donation.
I guess what I didn't understand is the material, I know what, that it was the falls and the railroad tracks, but is it made out of actual or tracks, or I thought it was more like a, you know?
Yeah, I can't say.
A mold. I guess if we, we just need more information.
And too much crashability issues.
Right.
Where we would put it as far back from.
Right.
Throwaway that isn't an issue. So to get the state approval, put it on pretty close to possible. So it really came down to two things, we could either put it on somebody's private land or in our right way. And I talked to Ron, he felt that on private land would be kind of difficult to get these.
Yeah. So. Yeah, I guess if you could pull, when you put that together, just I I could, material was, that I did not know, the design is what I was looking at when we were.
Rocks are real, aren't they? Well, actually, we'll find out.
Okay.
I guess I know as much as you do.
Yeah.
I think it is old rail tracks and, yeah, there was a presentation at the one meeting.
Right, well, I wasn't able to be at that meeting, so all I saw was the pictures.
I know he does very talented work with this.
Okay. Don Luke?
And then the, the Hamlet of Jewettville is gonna get jealous and we're gonna be working on one there too, so. Nope, that's it.
Jolene?
One, I was just gonna comment on that letter about the cemeteries, that was, that was great. Don't usually have like pleasant surprises when we're going through the correspondence.
It was some time that Dave and I were a little worried.
I know, well, a few different times we've, over the last twelve years, you know, we've had conversations, we've, yes.
It would, it would, it would cost the town a lot of money to be very deep to do this, it's in very good shape.
The only other thing was I did attend the West Falls Advisory Committee meeting. You know, just as kind of a liaison for us, and there was a great turnout, there, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty people there, some very good conversation. Most of the conversation focused on, I got there a little bit late, but on a presentation and some dialogue with Deb Fenn, and I think his name is Rick, I'm not sure his last name. From the Katz County Pat McGee Trail in Cataragus County. The only thing that I had, the only thing that I did mention to them, because, you know, they wanted to know what the board's current stance was, and I stated that our, the latest resolution, which was many, many years ago, was not in favor of the trail in particular because of the issues with the Conservation Society and the neighboring adjacent residences and, you know, just let them know that that's the current position. Did let them know though, that we're, you know, pleased to see the dialogue with the Conservation Society and with the residents and, you know, I think a few other people that were there had some of their concerns at least start to be addressed and they felt like they were heard. But that, you know, they mentioned several times that they need town board approval in order for the Wilson Foundation to move forward with any grant money that they have and you know, and at that point in time, Jack from, Jack Boquin from the Conservation Society stated, you know, he's happy with the conversation that's been had, but they're really looking for something more concrete, whether it's a memorandum of understanding or some sort of an agreement stating that, you know, we will look out for the best interests of the club and ensure their, their continuity. You know, it's kind of the chicken or the egg. They can't move forward with the trail, you know, without the funding, yet they can't get the funding without our approval and, you know, the town board really isn't, I said my position was that, you know, until we had most, I guess, certainty, as much certainty as we could with regard to the protection and the things that they would do for the residents and for the Conservation Society, that I wouldn't be able to be in favor of changing the resolution, so. I think they have another, Jack and Deb and some other representatives have another meeting scheduled to see if they can't try to put something in writing and, and we'll see what happens, but.
Have they discussed anything? Can I mention about the, given you know that we're flooding on Old Blenwood behind those neighborhoods? Something we did find out from that meeting is Rails for Trails is responsible for that. In fact, they are going over there to try to assist. Mr. Fenn emailed us, Ms. Transky. Trouble is, like Jolene said, the Rails for Trails has no money. But they have all these commitments from different foundations, mainly the Ralph C. Wilson one, where they believe they're gonna get unbelievable.
Lot of money.
Come. And like the gentleman from the Pappy Key Trail outset, that if they could get that money, they would throw it at those great additions. Perhaps taking the pipes out. So I, I think it was very encouraging to those residents to hear that there finally may be an answer, this has been going on for decades. If you weren't aware, we have a railroad, the pipes are too small from a hundred years ago. So it was an interesting way to think, but it's really the chicken before the egg, if the town board doesn't move forward with it, the foundations won't do that.
Right.
So I think it's something you ought to really think of.
Well, and the only, the other, along those lines though, I did say, you know, do you have anything, I asked the, you know, Deb, does the group have anything in writing stating, you know, from, from Wilson's foundation stating that those are the parameters, because even that would go a long way and it's, it's much better than just the word that, oh yeah, we have all this money coming if.
I, I think that the chicken and the egg is not quite appropriate here because there are so many different midpoints between the chicken and the egg. And that we don't have to give one hundred percent to support, no matter what happens. We can give, we can do a resolution saying that we would support, you know, the receipt of fund, you know.
That's true, that's true.
And that would then also help, I think, the, the residents who have these issues, that we say, we will support this project. If this is, and we, we are able to address and flesh out all those issues, including the Conservation Society, and we talked to Jack and we make sure everybody's comfortable.
Frankly, that one's probably the most important one. The, the funding is, I agree with you, I mean, I think that's real with, you know, with the town's approvals and, and they sound like, they make it sound like that the funds will be focused in the municipalities that approve it, and it could be, you know, they, they don't need to be contiguous, you know what I mean? It's not like it needs to be approved. Right, so.
Right.
Right, so, you know.
This trail is happening, right, it has already happened, that, that is, that, not to make a pun here, but that train has that train has left the station, yeah?
That's true.
But, so maybe it's time to take a more proactive approach with, with Deb and the organizations and to start thinking about what a resolution would look like.
Well, and that's, that's what I told her, and, you know, I'm not sure she's, that would require some additional conversation, but I told her what, it's pretty much what you said, that's what would be needed and we can then start the dialogue, but the first thing is, I think, you know, there has to be something out there, some sort of proof or documentation of what their commitment, the Wilson's commitment is. I can't imagine that.
But I think we could actually, you know, also have conversations with the Wilson Foundation to see what kind of resolution they would be, they would need in order to make a decision, right? So would that be acceptable?
Well, I saw if there was a contact or, I didn't get a lot of information, so.
Yeah. Well, we've, yeah, but it is good to see that the dialogue is happening and the two groups don't wanna kill each other anymore, that's.
That is true.
Direction.
That is true.
Anything else, Joe?
No, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Veronica for coming and taking the time tonight, because the reason we're putting the moratorium on is all of the above that you stated. You know, when we did the ODA code a couple of years ago, we tried to make our code better, we tried to be better. And then we, here we are a couple of years later and we're like, there's some holes that we see. They will find a way, and there's a lot of variances happening, so that's the reason why we, we have the moratorium, so thank you for taking the time to come out.
Yeah.
With your concerns.
I don't know if it's just me, but your oratory skills. I want you in every single meeting moving forward. We're not gonna make you call yourself an SOB every time, but it was.
That's it, nope.
I have nothing tonight, so we'll go right on to nine audience, and this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the board on any items. Just come up to the table and grab the mic.
Listening to the trailways, I think that's a wonderful situation. However, not to put water on the fire, I think there are two concerns that I would have at any time, especially with nonprofits. Number one, liability, bigger pockets, you even said yourself, they don't have any money. What are you signing up for as it relates to the trail itself, which is a wonderful thing to have, hike and all that. But by having your implied endorsement, what legal situations does that have for you? And also, listening about the cemeteries, what is the liability? Bond issues as to putting people into the town, security? How much of this is gonna be put on the shoulders of the town? Or is it gonna be one hundred percent with the Conservation Society, that it's just a parcel and it's up to them to maintain the parcel going through the town? As soon as we, you put your signature on that, I'm wondering about the liability, the potential liability that could occur, as to how deep do you go with your imprimatur, and so that's something that I would consider calling, reaching out and saying, what is, what is it that you're looking for me to do? Hey, I'm looking to have a, a bond issue of one million dollars to have up there or something, say, this is nothing, but you know, you can drive through our property. Okay, fine, and I don't know, but that's my concern.
Thank you. Just one point of clarification, like Luke had said, that the trail itself is approved. It's, and there isn't anything that the town can, can do about it. All of those concerns are things that we've talked about in the past over the years, maintenance and monitoring and, you know, police protection and things like that. And those are all concerns, but they're going to be there for us, unfortunately, whether or not we, you know, go ahead with anything that would assist in obtaining the funding because that funding would theoretically help. You know, make it a better trail, safer trail, but totally agree.
Anybody else? Everybody? And then we'll go to staff reports, and I'll start with Shane.
Just wanted to, our newest police officer, another local young man. Getting, it's gonna be great, and, and a big addition.
Good. Liz?
As you're aware, Kevin Glover resigned, so right now, it's just Jim and I sat at the office. If you need to get ahold of me directly, I ask that you call. If you need to stop at the office, though, just call ahead and make sure that there's time there, that I'll be there. Bill Kramer has offered his services if necessary at this point in time, and we, I don't feel like I need him, but, but I am at the forefront of setting an open-ended arrangement with him while he's on vacation, so that's available if we need it. Kathleen has begun the canvas process because the test was rerun in June. There were four additional, these were residents who took the test at the same time. Those letters went out and the deadline is this Friday to reply, so we'll move on to that one.
I think we've already had at least one return.
Couple have come back.
A couple, yeah.
Good.
I just, I would say, my personal opinion, don't be, don't hesitate to bring on Bill, I think, because we don't need, we need you sane and refreshed and, I mean, I would.
I agree, we're still in the busy time.
You're gonna wanna do what's best for your town, whatever, but I would say, get him in there and get him out of retirement and we'll come in there and make fun of him.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll pull him when we, when we ask to. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take it all on, but at this point in time, we're, we're keeping an eye on it, so.
Also, I think we had a moratorium then, right?
Dave?
Yeah, I knew I'd be getting this real soon, I got a email just this afternoon from Walt Blockman from the high school, that they are planning on coming to the Polo Grounds for their big cross-country race, the Invitational. It's on September eleventh, and he is already reaching out to me to ask if we can close the road like we did in twenty nineteen. Now, twenty eighteen was the year where we had no notice about this, remember Shane, and they are everywhere. So then the following year, we did a better plan where we shut down the road, the buses parked all on Knox Road. So I'll make sure Shane, you get this.
I got it.
Okay. I just got this, so the rec hopefully gets this to us right away for approval, because it's coming up real quick.
He will need a, he'll need a parking plan and just like.
He has that, so I'm assuming the rec got this, but I just will need you to get it to the proof, and I assume you're okay with me reaching out to the county to make that happen.
Yep.
You know, we can talk at the next meeting, but I'll make sure the rec gets this to you right away. They probably sent this this afternoon.
Okay.
The other thing does relate to Knox, I am still pushing hard with that question, I talked to Jim about it. I had a meeting with Commissioner Gary about it. Legislature Lurigo, and we are starting to look at a lot of options. It's probably gonna take some time, but we're, we are working towards that, right, Jim?
Yep.
Back to our, we had a really good meeting in West Falls, I went, just, they asked me to. The final thing you forgot to mention, Jolene, is the county, Bay Road Railroad.
Oh, yeah.
It said they needed permission, because I was at that, I met with the president, I ended up linking them with the county, and just today, the county got that from them, so. Everything's been now cleared for the county to remove that home. I'd say it's gonna happen fast, usually things like that are construction projects, they got that out of bed, it may take more time. But it looks like we finally have got something to move on that, so I'll let you know if you're part of it.
Thanks, Dave.
Everyone knows that the hump is the railroad, the tracks that used to go.
Yes.
Everyone knows that the hump is the railroad, the tracks that used to go across there.
Yes, yes.
That they never took out, so.
It's a launch.
Yeah, kind of a launch.
It was interesting to find out, so regardless of drainage, literally, you're right, for 99 years, whether we liked the trail or not, it's there. And they actually do have the rights to all these issues, like the drainage. And you would have thought it's railroads, but it's not. It's Rails for Trails now.
So maybe they can improve the area. The residents will be happy with it and.
They say if they can get that funding, I guess Ralph Wilson's fund, because the stock market went from $1 billion to $2 billion one year, and he only has 20 years to burn it up.
And they, they had said that the Pat McGee Trail, I think, was like $100,000 per mile to develop and the anticipated funding is almost is almost a million per mile.
That's what they're going to do.
Geez.
It's not going to be just a little blockage. It's going to be, if they can do what they're dreaming of.
Will there be snowmobiles in it?
In parts. They did say, once he got past Colton, I believe, the Boston Trail system is working with them.
And I don't know.
But not up in our area, but I, I don't think it's ever been mentioned from our area.
Not that I'm aware of.
But they did mention down in the Concord area.
I think they are using it already. Last year they used it, I think.
And they did say the towns that did support it would get the money, and then ones that didn't are the ones that are going to just have a, you know, a little fear of that.
Now, that said, it's, it's impassable in our town without some significant investment in the
Right.
In the
So anyway, good luck. We got that hump at least finally, the legal.
Okay, thanks. Paul? Anything for us tonight? No? Tony? All right.
Mr. Hughes, the open space.
John. Hi, John.
You're just here for fun tonight, John? Just for fun, coming to visit us tonight?
They miss anybody else? Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
By Jolene. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can't go until I get a second.
I got a second.
Second by Sue.
Discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.